It is now 6:14. We do apologize for the late start. We had a lot of meat and potatoes to go through tonight, so thank you for being patient. We appreciate that, and we're going to get right to this with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tradition is, we have somebody from council say a few words, and I believe, Ms. Shouerman?
Thank you. Tonight, I picked something from Dr. Seuss, and it's, again, something just to think about. Sometimes you will never know the value of a moment until it becomes a memory. Thank you.
I like that. I think that's the first time we've had Dr. Seuss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bale?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Here.
Mr. Scatella?
Here.
Mr. Winarski?
Here.
Chairman Schenck?
Here.
Thank you. So, we're going to have the hearing of the public. I believe we didn't have anybody call in, correct, ahead of time, so the way this works is you'll have a three-minute segue. Microphone over here to your right. Just step up, say who you are and where you live.
All right, I will start at the top. So, my name is Jennifer Everline. I am the Community Program Manager for Blue Zones Project Cory, and with me today are my two colleagues, Ashley Lawson and Shannon Wolford. Blue Zones Project is a community health and well-being initiative, inceptioned in 2009 in Albert Lee, Minnesota. Cory is one of over 60 Blue Zones Project communities nationwide. However, Cory stands out as the first project in the Northeast region of the United States, and later this year will be recognized as the first certified Blue Zones Project community in such region. With a people-place's policy approach toward improving community well-being, we would like to share a few of our many successes over the past three years in Cory. However, first, I want to note, we also worked with the County of Erie to become an approved Blue Zones Project work site. The County of Erie has seen a drop in healthcare costs and turnover rates since our partnership. We maintain our relationship with them for sustainability and for continued employee well-being improvement. But back to Cory. We have seen improvement in several community well-being index measurements, including an increase in overall thriving from about 45% to 68%, and an increase in community pride from 33% to almost 50%. Well-being improvement creates value through future medical savings, productivity gains, and other factors. Using a validated valuation model, Sharecare, our parent company, estimates the value of Cory's community well-being gains to date at $4 million, with an additional $2.7 million in grants and $1.3 million in media coverage. Total value, $8 million. In highlighting our policy work, we have built strong relationship and collaboration with Impact Cory on several initiatives such as Rails to Trails and Connectivity. With respect to Connectivity, Blue Zones Project helped to facilitate initial funding conversations between the county and Impact Cory, and currently, we are assisting by organizing our core walkers, our core volunteers, to conduct needed poll mapping for Cory's six-mile radius. Impact Cory is just one example of our many community partners whom we collaborate with to create long-term, sustainable, environmental changes to support well-being. We hope County Council will help us steward the next phase of our work in Cory for its continued future growth. We would like to request more time to present at the county council, two county councils, at the next finance meeting on February 10th. In the meantime, we will have Jill from the county office provide you with some additional documentation of Cory's success. My contact information will also be in that email. And with that, I say thank you.
We'll share. That's why we can't have nice stuff. Anybody else would like to speak at this time? Anybody else would like to speak at this time? Anybody else would like to speak at this time? Okay. Now, we go to the next one. So, I'm going to need a motion to minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
So moved. And I need a vote on that, please. Ms. Inon?
On approval of the minutes from January 18th, 2022, Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
Thank you. Reports from county officials.
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we have the Finance Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, January 27th, and submit the following to the agenda. In Old Business A through F and New Business A through C, J, and P. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Personnel Committee?
Personnel Committee met on Thursday, January 27th, and submit to the agenda, Old Business G through P, New Business D through I and K through O. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And you hear us all shuffling papers at this time because we have to change gears. So, under Old Business, A will be the second reading of ordinance number one. Oh, yes, maybe we have a reading, title only.
Ordinance number one, 2022, amending the budget total on the face sheet of ordinance 109, 2021, the 2022 General Fund Budget.
So moved.
I have a first by Ms. Shouerman, second by Mr. Horton. Roll call vote, please. Oh, any comments or questions? Seems excited. Ready to go. Yes, Mr. Horton.
Yes.
On ordinance number one, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Mr. Schenck?
Yes.
On ordinance number two, this will be repealing this ordinance. This is a house cleaning issue at this point. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Oh, could we have a reading of number two before we repeal it?
Ordinance number two, 2022, repealing ordinance 125, 2021, the 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund Budget, revised expenditure of $250,000 for women as minority in small business center.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Rennie and Mr. Scatella. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, may we have roll call vote, please. I appreciate your help.
On ordinance number two, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we have a second reading of ordinance number three.
Ordinance number three, 2022, the first 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $14,400 for creation of tuition reimbursement line item within the court's budget.
So moved. Second.
We might have to arm wrestle. Ms. Shouerman gave the first, Ms. Scatella the second. Any comments? Seeing none, may we have roll call vote, please.
On ordinance number three, Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
This is number D, the second reading of ordinance number six. Title only, please.
Okay. Ordinance number six, 2022, the second 2022 Library Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $22,192 for completion of CAFE project started in 2021.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second.
Excuse me.
By Ms. Rennie and Mr. Bale. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance number six, Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman? Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
May we have a second reading of ordinance number eight, and title only, please.
Ordinance number eight, 2022, approving Harbor Creek Township Lurda Ordinance 2010-201-6 as amended.
So moved. Second.
I have a first by Mr. Scatella and Mr. Winarski. Any comments? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance number eight, Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
May we have a read on the second reading of ordinance number 21, title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 21, 2022, seventh 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $22,192 for completion of CAFE project started in 2021.
So moved.
Okay. We have a first by Ms. Rennie and second by Ms. Shouerman. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
On the ordinance 21, Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Schenck?
Yes.
May we have a second reading on ordinance number 11, title only, please.
The second reading of ordinance number 11, 2022, the 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance for the First Assistant County Solicitor.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Ms. Shouerman and Mr. Bale. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance number 11, Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shouerman? Mr. Scatella?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a second reading on ordinance number 12, 2022, title only, please?
Second reading of ordinance number 12, 2022, 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance for two assistant county solicitors.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Shouerman and second by Mr. Winarski. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
On ordinance number 12, Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
May we have a second reading of ordinance number 13, 2022, title only, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to amend this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
I would like to move to amend it, to change the numbers to reflect that of the HR code, which would allow for the promotion to an NB 25F, $47.63 an hour, for an approximate annual salary of $92,879. And I would like to move this, amend, move to amend this ordinance to reflect those amounts.
Sorry for cutting you off. I thought you were done. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. You have any comments or questions?
Don't we have to read the ordinance first, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we have to amend the motion. I just wanted to have if everybody had a comment at that point, but if not, we will have a roll call vote on the amendment.
On ordinance number 13 as amended, Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Schenck?
Yes.
Okay, second reading of ordinance number 14, 2022.
I'm sorry. We'll have...
Yeah, that was amendment. I apologize. Okay. We made a motion to make the amendment, so now we have to do a roll call vote on the amendment as it was read.
Uh, ordinance number 13 as amended, Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Shouerman?
Yeah.
And Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
This will be the second reading of ordinance number 14.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to amend this ordinance and the exhibit sheet to reflect an NB 220 rate of pay. That's $52.17 an hour, or $101,732. And the amendment would be for those numbers and for the exhibit.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote on the amending...
For the board?
Yes, sir.
I believe that we, the official thing that we should have done was review the ordinance and then offer the amendment after the ordinance was read. We did the last, the last one, and we're going down that path again this time, but we're a little odd sequence.
That's correct.
Solicitor?
Councilman Portman is correct. Why don't you just read the ordinance first, and then, and then we could, then we could kind of change the vote on the amendment as proposed by the mayor. And if you chair, I'll, I'll come explanation.
That's fine.
But it's, you know, we have a public, some people like to follow the amendment, and then they know what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Ms. Inon?
Um, okay, I'm sorry. Second reading of ordinance number 14, 2022, 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance, Public Defender.
So moved as amended.
Second.
We have a first and a second. We just need a roll call vote on the amendment.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
So now, we need to make a vote on that amendment, as was read previously out of time.
Ordinance number 14 as amended, Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck?
Second reading of ordinance number 15, title only.
The second reading of ordinance number 15, 2022, amending the Human Resource Code, 2022 Fourth General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $10,840 for change in hours and increase in wages for starting salary of Director of Veterans Affairs.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the floor. Any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Please.
I'll be voting no on this as a, as a presenting, based on our caucus discussion, how we thought this should be approached. This wasn't the prescribed method for doing that. So for that reason, tonight, I'll be voting no.
Anybody else? Ms. Rennie?
Thank you. I, too, was going to withhold any comment. I would like to see this go to a no vote, with the thought that this can go back to the administration. They can take it through the processes of the Pay Plan Personnel Code and take it for a possible reclassification consideration through the Human Resources Department. But for this evening, I would say to vote no on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll just make a quick comment. We did discuss this in length in caucus on the ups and downs, left and rights on this. I believe that we have to look at the job and not the people we're putting in there at this point, and I will not be supporting it this. So, Ms. Inon, roll call vote, please.
On ordinance number 15, Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shouerman?
No.
Mr. Scatella?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Chairman Schenck?
No.
Ordinance fails.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to amend the agenda at this point to include items L, M, N, and O on one vote for housekeeping purposes.
I have a first and a second. We're going to take a roll call vote on amending that. Ms. Inon?
On amending the agenda, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Schenck?
Yes.
And now, we just need a vote on how they amended to remove. Strike that. Not to remove them, on a vote yes or no. Yes, to consolidate them.
On ordinances number 16, 17, 18, and 19? Mrs. Shouerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
I'm sorry, Ms. Inon. I need a point of clarification on this. Is this the amendment, or is this to vote them up or down?
You amended the agenda to have them as one vote.
As one vote. I believe the intent was to vote all of these down as one.
Yeah, to remove them, we have to vote them down. We pulled them together as one, and now we have to vote to remove them off as a no.
Or as a, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There was not, again, there was no reading done, and that's why we, that's why we went to a vote, from the vote on the amendment to a vote on all four.
Correct.
So, there should have been, there should be a reading of all four, and then there would be a vote, a motion to vote on these ordinances as amended. And that's where, as discussed in the caucus, there would be a, a yes. Excuse me, a motion, but not a second.
I move to strike the previous act and then go back and start over. Is it second?
Second. That's a second. Okay, we have a first and a second.
Okay, this is on a motion to strike the voting process on the amendment, existing amendment, start over.
Who was the second, please?
I was.
On the motion to strike? Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Motion. Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Shou, uh, Mrs. Rennie, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yeah.
And Mr. Schenck?
Yes.
On 20? Okay, we're going to need a second read on L, M, N, and O.
Second reading of ordinance number 16, 2022, amending the Human Resource Code, second 2022 Public Health Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $21,211 for temporary promotion of acting deputy director to acting director of the county health department, change in hours and increase in wages. Ordinance number 17, 2022, fifth 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $21,211 for temporary promotion of acting deputy director to acting director of the county health department, change in hours and increase in wages. Ordinance number 18, 2022, amending the Human Resource Code, third 2022 Public Health Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $5,587 for temporary promotion of health promotion and quality improvement director to acting deputy director of the county health department, change in hours and increase in wages. And, and ordinance number 19, 2022, sixth 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $5,587 for temporary promotion of health promotion and quality improvement director to acting deputy director of the county health department, change in hours and increase in wages.
So moved on all of those, with the intent of voting it down?
Do we need a second? Need a second, please?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. We are going to get through tonight, one way or the other. Well, we have a first and a second. second, so now we have to have a roll call vote to vote that up or down, correct? Correct, sir? Okay. So a yes or a no vote. Ms. Anon, please. Or you all wanna talk about this first, but at this point, I think we just go to the roll call vote and get it done.
Mr. Winarsky?
No.
This is voted.
What's that?
For everyone, I mean, it's important to know that the vote is, a yes vote votes it down.
No, I mean, a no vote.
You want to be, well, there was no amendment.
There was, the amendment was just a group, and, yeah.
Yes.
So a no vote votes it down.
So no means no.
No means no. Do you wanna vote?
See, when you talk lawyer talk, sometimes yes means no.
Yes.
No.
Another yes.
Okay, Mr. Winarsky, for clarity?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Mr. Scatella?
No.
And Chairman Shank?
No.
End of fails.
Okay. I can assume we're on 20 at this point, correct?
Wait, I'm sorry.
No, don't, don't apologize. You're doing fine. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Second reading and title only of ordinance number 20.
Thank you. Second reading of ordinance number 20, 2022, appointed official salary ordinance interim county clerk.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move that we amend this ordinance, the face sheet, to reflect an NB 18F slot of $31.67 per hour, $61,756 annually. However, this should also, the amendment also includes the temporary nature of the job as outlined in the Personnel Code, Section 9D6 of three months.
I have a motion for an amendment. Thank you. I have a first by Ms. Rennie and Mr. Horton. Roll call vote on the amendment.
On the amendment, Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Chairman Shank?
Yes. Now, we have taken a vote to amend this. Now we're gonna vote on if it goes up or down. Ms. Anon?
Ordinance 20, as amended. Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. That was a tough one. Now it takes us to our new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to amend, move to amend the agenda under new business to move items A, B, and I to a second reading.
I have a motion on the floor for amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Rennie and Ms. Showerman. Now we're voting on amending this one.
Amending the agenda, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. Now, we made the amendment to ordinance number four, so now we're going to, this'll be a second reading, correct? And title only. Ms. Anon?
Second reading of ordinance number four, 2022, approving the 2022 General Fund Budget waiver of the County Purchasing Code for tax billing and collection software system from the current vendor.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton and a second by Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
On ordinance four, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. As we discussed earlier, we decided to make A and B a second read, so can we have a second read on ordinance number 22? Title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 22, 2022, approving the 2022 General Fund Budget waiver of the County Purchasing Code for Erie County Department of Corrections to purchase and install touchscreen updates from current vendor.
Second. Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton and a second by Ms. Rennie. Any discussions or questions at this point? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
On ordinance number 22, Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 23, 2022. This is a first read.
First reading of ordinance number 23, 2022, approval of the 2022 Erie County District Revision Commission final report.
That will take us to...
Don't move. Oh, it's a first.
These bifocals, these are new bifocals. They're hard to see close up sometimes. Yeah. See, we don't get a chance to step on it today. It's all good. So that was... Yeah? Gotcha. This'll be first reading of ordinance number 24, 2022, and title only, first reading.
First reading of ordinance number 24, 2022, appointed official salary ordinance, county solicitor salary.
Then it takes us to first reading of ordinance number 25. This is a first reading only.
First reading of ordinance number 25, 2022, the 8th, 2022, General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $5,927 for county solicitor salary increase.
That takes us to F, first reading of ordinance number 26, first reading only.
First reading of ordinance number 26, 2022, 2022, Public Health Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $8,775 and creation of temporary staff line for maternal and child health bureau.
Okay. This takes us to G, first reading ordinance number 27, 2022.
First reading of ordinance number 27, 2022, amending the Human Resource Code, 9th, 2022, General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $20,164 for existing employee to move into vacant position in county executive office.
This is H. This is the first reading of ordinance number 28, 2022, first reading only.
First reading of ordinance number 28, 2022, the 2022 Public Health Fund Budget Revised Expenditure for temporary increase in wages and hours of $4,476 for acting deputy director of public health.
And just a footnote, we already voted to move this to a second, so this is a second reading of ordinance number 29, 2022.
Second reading of ordinance number 29, 2022, 10th, 2022, General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $21,668 for change of director of administration salary increase.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to amend this ordinance to reflect the vote taken and the change of exhibit under ordinance 13, that the language used for both of those be used as well in this ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for an amendment.
Second.
We have a first by Ms. Rennie and a second by Ms. Showerman. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so everyone understands, the original appropriation was $21,668, and the exhibit will now reflect the lower amount as voted upon by council under ordinance 13. Thank you.
Thank you for that point of clarification. Any comments? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
On the amendment to the ordinance, Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. Yes. Now we're gonna need a motion, sorry, a roll call vote on the amendment that we just voted on.
The ordinance as amended. Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to J, Resolution Number 2, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, would you like that read in title only?
Title only, thank you.
Resolution Number 2, 2022, an objection to PA State has preliminary redistricting map released December 16, 2021.
So moved?
Second.
I have a first and a second by Ms. Showerman and Mrs. Scatella. Any questions or comments at this point? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 2, Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Chairman Shank?
Yes. Okay, this takes us down to K, possible reappointment of Lisa Austin to the Erie County Planning Commission. And this is presented by Councilman Horton. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Lisa's just going for a reappointment, and she's been a good appointment. She was for the second term.
Anybody else? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
I have a motion.
We have a mo, we need a motion.
I move.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton and a second by Ms. Showerman. Roll call vote, please.
On the appointment of Ms. Austin, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. L is possible appointment of Mark Sleppi to the Erie County Planning Commission. Could you read that? In title, please.
Possible appointment of Mark Sleppi to the Erie County Planning Commission, representing District 5, term to expire December 31, 2022.
This appointment is mine, so I'll say a few words. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mark for quite a long time. He is one of those guys, if you need a project done, you go ask Mark and he'll get it done. He's a, he's a Harvard College graduate. We kinda like drifted apart, then we came back together, and he approached me and said, hey, I wanna go do something for my community. What do you got available? And I know he likes to build stuff. He's been in construction, rental property, so I figured this is the guy that I am presenting, so I just need a motion, please.
So moved?
Second.
I have a first and a second on the appointment of Mr. Sleppi. Roll call vote, please.
On the appointment of Mr. Sleppi, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Would that look odd if I said no? This one's a little more complicated. This is a possible waiver of the Administration Code, Article 2, Section 5. So we're gonna... Well, I can read through it, and the reappointment of Dr. Carl...
Carl?
Arco for the Erie County Board of Health. The reason we have to make a waiver of the Administrative Code is because there's term issues, and we've discussed it, and so we're gonna need a motion to waive for that waiver.
So moved to waive the Administrative Code?
Second. Mr. Chair, I mean, actually, the way it should go is that Nicole should read the appointment, in this case, the appointment, and that's sufficient, because you, you council will be voting on the waiver and the appointment at the same time.
We thought it might have had to be two. We had to vote on the motion, and then we're gonna waive the Administrative Code, and then vote the person in.
We could make it more long.
Listen, we've done it all night long. Why start something new now? No, that's fine, sir. We're gonna go with our, with our solicitors here.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, we appreciate that, sir. So Nicole?
Possible waiver of Administrative Code, Article 2, Section 5, A1O, and reappointment of Dr. Carla Picardo to the Erie County Board of Health, term to expire December 31, 2025.
So moved? Second.
I have a first and a second. Any comments?
Just a question.
Yes, Ernie Tellerico, on the, the way, possible waiver of administration. Are we
getting, getting close to setting precedents if we do this all the time?
Yeah, well, yes, to the extent that you deviate from any law, or in this case, a regulation like the Personnel Code, it becomes meaningless. So yes, there is language in there, in the Administrative Code, that limits terms to consecutive terms. So if council gets in the habit of doing this, then everyone's gonna wanna just stay forever. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But it should be, it should, the code should not be waived automatically every time it gets requested. Council should be a little more concerned and exercise that authority to waive it in particular circumstances, taking into consideration whether someone is needed for another term because of their experience, things like that.
Thank you.
But council does have the authority to waive.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Ms. Anon?
On the reappointment of Dr. Picardo, Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes. This is a possible appointment of Dr. Fernando. I need a good Italian on this one. Thank you. This is a possible appointment of Dr. Fernando. I need a good Italian on this one. Thank you. I didn't wanna spell it wrong, say it wrong, for the Erie County Board of Health.
So moved. Second.
I've got a first and a second on the floor. Any questions, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
On the appointment of Dr. Mirarachi, Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Talarico, we're in the same scenario. We just wanna do this as one. Okay, this is, Anon?
Possible waiver of Administrative Code, Article Two, Section Five, A1O, and reappointment of Dr. Richard Ortowski to the Erie County Board of Health, term to expire December 31, 2025.
So moved. Second.
I have a first and a second on the floor. Need to. Oh, Mr. Bale, thank you for the second. I wasn't sure which one it was. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Chairman Schenk. I propose to our solicitor's comments on item M, in terms of waiving the Administrative Code. Never have truer words been spoken. I, I'm supporting the waiver in this case because of the, we are in a scenario, I believe, that an exception should be made. I believe that we're in the midst of, we're still in the midst of a pandemic. Everyone's tired of it. We kind of, hopefully. We just lost our director of health, that's what. I believe in times like this, maybe you have to move. Maybe experienced people are already on the ground. It doesn't make a lot of sense to take them off.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, Ms. Anon?
On the reappointment, Mrs., I'm so sorry. Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Chairman Schenk?
Yes.
We're getting close. This takes us to P. Ms. Anon, would you be so kind?
The possible sale of parcel from a repository for unsold property at index number 04-019-066.0-002.00.
So moved. Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Anon?
On the parcel, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Well, that brings us to the end. The next Finance Personal Committee meeting will, meeting are Thursday, February 10, 2022, at 4:00 PM in room 114 Alpha, Erie County Courthouse, or via Zoom. Next regular meeting of County Council is Tuesday, February 15, at 6:00 PM in room 117 at the courthouse. Anybody in the public wish to speak at the upcoming regular meetings or council requiring specific accommodations are encouraged to call or email the council office. I have, I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I got a first and a second. Have a good night.